Well, good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to Commissioners' Court. This morning, we're scheduled to have representatives from Sand Springs this morning to say their invocation. Please. And Commissioner McCam, the pledges.
Good morning. Thank you. The famous King of Israel, Solomon, was quite young when he began to reign. I always heard the first thing he did was ask God for wisdom, but found out recently that according to the original Hebrew, he asked God for a hearing heart. God was so pleased, Solomon asked for this. He not only answered the king's prayers, but blessed Israel with decades of extraordinary peace and prosperity. So, our Father in Heaven, we humbly ask you this morning that you give the members of this commission hearing hearts, so you can apply your wisdom to all the decisions made today. We know there are no small judgments because each affects the people and future of Henderson County, so give them and all the leaders you've chosen to lead this county ears to hear. In Jesus' name.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor to Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you very much. Well, the time is 9:02. We do have a quorum, so we will call this meeting to order. Are there any citizens' comments?
Yes, sir.
Item number one, consider and take action on minutes from previously held meeting of Commissioners' Court held on October 15th, 2024. Are there any additions, deletions, or comments?
Hearing that judge, I move we approve the minutes from Commissioners' Court regular session, October 15th, 2024, as presented.
I'll second your motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey, uh, excuse me, by Commissioner Tootley, and seconded by Commissioner Spivey, to approve the minutes from Commissioners' Court meeting of October 15th, 2024, as presented. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Item number two is consider and take action to proclaim October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month for Henderson County. And with us today, we have three organizations sitting here in the room with them. We have Breaking Chains, the Help Center, and the Family Peace Project. The work that is done by these organizations cannot be praised enough. And if you would, I'd like to have, please, all three representatives, one from each organization, if you would, please come forward to the microphone and kind of give us some information, please. Come forward. I know this is kind of being sprung on you, but there's not enough knowledge out there of the work that is done by these organizations. We are very blessed in this county to have three organizations that work together to provide these unmet needs out there. So, please.
I'm Dela Cooper, the Executive Director of Breaking Chains. As of August 23rd, 2024, we are now, we are a state-recognized nonprofit entity. I always commend Henderson County because we live in an awesome county where people work together. We are three entities. We have the same goal. We have the same heart. We have the same outcome that we want to see happen, but yet we do three different things, yet we intertwine in doing one. So.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Cynthia Robles, and I am the Managing Director and Advocate for the Family Peace Project. And truly, it is a blessing to be able to collaborate together with all these agencies. As Dela said, this is truly a mission, and a mission that we all have together, in which we should all be able to just come along the side of each other to be servants of the Lord and also to be able to assist these families that are in such need. We do have two shelters here in Athens, and there's where we are able to house the families, house them, and just be able to give them the opportunity and the chance for them to better themselves. We bring them to classes, just a whole lot of other things that we do with them, but it's really just to mentor them, guide them, inspire them, and more than anything, to really guide them and point them to the cross. It's just amazing to see the results and how these families come about. So, it is a blessing that we are able to collaborate with everyone here. But I thank everyone. I thank you for the city, for the state of Texas. I think it's an amazing state. I'm from Illinois. I'm from Chicago. I've been here nine years. And ever since I stepped foot into the state, I said, "There's something unique and something different," and the feeling was just amazing. And now I see why. I see why. There's great people here. But yes, let's continue to do the great work. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I'm Leslie Saunders. I'm the Director at the Henderson County Help Center. The Help Center is an umbrella organization that provides an array of services for the county. One of them is Maggie's House Child Advocacy Center. We also have an Adult Crime Victim Services Program. And to collaborate with these amazing other organizations, as they both have said, we all work together as one, whether they're serving adults, they're serving women and children, we're serving children and other victims of crime, we all work together. And so, with the help of the court and the commissioners and judges well, we continue to do this. And so, thank you for what you guys do, but also thank you for these ladies for what they do as well.
And as I'm reading the proclamation, it's not just for Breaking Chains. It's for the other entities, and it's for everybody as we come together to recognize October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. In recognition to the important work of domestic violence programs, the victim service providers, and the survivors, we urge all citizens to actively participate in the scheduled activities and programs sponsored by Breaking Chains and other community organizations in the endeavor in eliminating domestic violence. Whereas, domestic violence is not confined to any one group or groups of people, but crosses all economical, racial, gender, educational, religious, and societal boundaries and sustained by indifference, and has huge ranging effects on individuals and society as a whole. And whereas, the crimes of domestic violence violate an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economical control and/or abuse. And whereas, more than 12 million women and men are victims of rape, physical violence, and/or stalking by an intimate partner in the United States every year, averaging 24 people per minute. Whereas, one in three women and one in four men in the United States have experienced contact, sexual violence, physical violence, and/or stalking by an intimate partner during their lifetime. And 40% of Texas women and 34.9% of Texas men experience intimate partner violence. And whereas, 30% of children exposed to intimate partner violence had their first exposure before the age of two, and additional 26% had their first exposure between the ages of two and seven. And victims of domestic violence are more likely to experience long-term mental and physical health concerns, including a higher risk of chronic disease, substance abuse, post-traumatic stress disorder, depression, anxiety, and risky behavior. And whereas, the prevention of these high numbers of domestic violence occurrence require the collective voice and power of individuals, families, institutions, and systems. And whereas, local programs, state coalitions, national organizations, and other agencies nationwide are committed to increasing public awareness of domestic violence and its prevalence and to eliminating it through prevention and education. And whereas, important partnerships have been formed among criminal agencies, healthcare providers, allied professionals, and victim services to assist the victims of domestic violence and their families. And whereas, it is important to recognize the compassion and dedication of the individuals who provide services to victims of domestic violence and work to increase public understanding of the significant problems. And whereas, we encourage domestic violence victims and their families to seek assistance from the appropriate victim service organizations such as Breaking Chains, Henderson County Help Center, and the Family Peace Project. And whereas, Henderson County joins with others across Texas and the nation in supporting victims of domestic violence, as well as local programs, state coalition, national organizations, and other agencies who are committed to increasing public awareness of domestic violence and sending a clear message to abusers that domestic violence is not tolerated. And whereas, victims should have help to find compassion, comfort, and healing they need, along with all support services, so that they can safely escape the cycle of abuse, and so that their abusers are punished to the full extent of the law. Now, therefore, the Commissioners' Court of Henderson County does hereby proclaim October 2024 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Thank you very much. Court, comments? Discussion?
I attended a fundraiser a couple weeks ago. They put on, and it was really, really great demand. I know a lot of hard work goes into helping make them the best of violence. I wanted to thank everyone that's here today, the people that have, that aren't here today, or the, for this organization. I have people on here who count. Thank you.
Well, we say it every year. I think one thing that's not in this that we have seen is the local numbers that will blow you away, that affect Henderson County. And those numbers are astonishing. And I've told Dela at the chamber meeting, they'll make you throw up at the microphone when you see those numbers that affect us locally. But it takes a special group of people to put all these together and work together. And I can't thank you enough because y'all see it on a daily basis, not a weekly basis or a monthly basis. You see it on a weekly basis, and then have to take it home to your families. So, we appreciate what you do for our victims and people of Henderson County. So, thank you.
Same thing. I'd like to say thank you to all three organizations that we have here in the county and all the people that work for these organizations. I know these numbers are incredible, and it's got to be mentally and physically draining on y'all, but it's work that has to be done, and we appreciate y'all doing it.
Thank y'all for everything you do for this county. Y'all, I know y'all are behind the scenes a lot of times, and people don't recognize that, what all that y'all do. Just thank y'all for everything that you do. And I hope that y'all, we can spread the awareness to help this be a better organization, and everybody come together and do great things. Thank y'all.
And the thing that makes Henderson County special is that coordination of efforts between all the organizations. And for those that have been here and seen and going, that is the secret to the success. Many people see the numbers of Henderson County, and one of the contributing factors is, is that we do have three organizations that work with our governmental entities to identify, to assist. You know, in other areas that are larger than us, their numbers might not be of the same proportional size that we get, but it's through your efforts that we're able to identify and more people are helped. So, thank you for that. And I will say that after we do this, we would love to have everyone come forward and have a picture taken, if you would, please. So, Court, any further discussion? Not entertain a motion.
I'd like to move to proclaim October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month for Henderson County.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, seconded by Commissioner Richardson, to proclaim October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month for Henderson County. All those in favor of the motion? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And if you would, please, I know there's a bunch of you, but come forward, please. We want to get, we'll scan this and email your copy of it.
Hey, I have another one. You can let them have one.
We'll leave it to them. Thank you, Dela. All right.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Get that out into the front. You want to steal? Appreciate y'all very much. Thank you for all you do. Hey, Kayla. All right. Moving on now, we have item number three, which is consider and take action on a possible burn ban for Henderson County.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm sure y'all been looking at the numbers. Right now, Henderson County is number nine, unless they've updated the numbers. I haven't seen yet this morning. You might be able to pull it up. In the 254 counties in Texas, we are the ninth driest county, or was it yesterday, with an average of 740 on the scale. It only goes up to 800. It's as high as it goes. I've met with the Texas Forestry Service. They come by and talk to us for a while. They are staging a lot of resources in our area right now. They've driven around our county and looked at the fuel load in our county. It's horrible. I think y'all can see it when you drive around out there. We've been very fortunate so far that we haven't had any fires really get out of control, but the belief is that it's possibly coming. So, that's why they're staging resources close to our area right now. Right now, we are in extreme fire danger because of the winds today and some of the winds that we're going to have with these storms coming. And I wish that I could say that these storms coming was going to really help us out, but the most we're expecting in some of the areas is an inch and a half of rain. And at the dryness that we're at, it's not going to impact us in a manner that would really make a significant change to our drought index. I mean, I can answer any questions that anybody has, but it's been several years since I've seen it this bad.
Court, questions?
Was the forestry service concerned about maybe some lightning? It may come along with a storm and the fuel load that we have right now?
It is. It is a concern. In our 100-hour fuel load right now, the three and four-inch stuff that's dead, or some of it even that's dry right now, is a concern with lightning. Because even if a lightning, you know, strikes a tree, it might catch fire three days later. We've seen some of that last year. And we won't know about it until three days later. So, it's, everything's a concern right now. Any kind of spark ignition source at all is a major concern.
Court?
What, how many kind of violations have we had in the, have we been in this 60 days now?
Seventy-four days.
Seventy-four days? Oh, yeah, because we've had two burn bans and then the 14-day one. How many violations have we, are there, has been out there, are people complying with us, or?
I think the reason that we haven't had any, or, you know, out-of-control fires is because people are complying. I'm not saying that there's not burn ban violations out there. I personally don't know of every burn ban violation. I don't get those, you know, texts and stuff like I used to get. I'm not even on that program anymore. The ones that I've been notified of, I mean, there's violations out there, but for the most part, it's people doing normal things, like cooking outside. I went to one yesterday where somebody was just cooking outside. That's not a violation of our burn ban.
Right.
And, but people being safe are going ahead and calling those fires in to let us know. And the ones that are called in, you know, they're getting taken care of.
What, when would you feel like that we go into the more restrictive deal? I can't remember the last time we did it.
Last year.
The welding and the outdoor cooking and stuff like that.
I mean, I think we're there. I think we're close to it. I really, I really want to see what this rain actually does. But, and I think they said something about maybe a little bit of rain on Saturday as well, but I believe we're close to it. You know, restricting people to not weld and stuff like that, I don't think is possible because that's how people make their living. But requiring somebody to have a spotter close by with some type of water source, you know, I think could be beneficial.
And Commissioner, to enter that point, there has to be a declaration of emergency.
They got, are from us?
From us. And that is, in our discussions over the last week concerning the situation, was we knew this little bit of rain was coming. So, we were wanting to hold off until we see what happens. And if, if things do not improve at all, we're there. I know three weeks ago, I quit cutting and welding outside because every, I'd cut two inches on pipe fence and ended up fighting fire. You know, cut, fight fire, cut, fight fire. And the grass was green. It was burning. And waiting on this weather system to come through, what we believe is, is very possibly this week, I'll make the declaration, and then it'd be followed up with court on the next Tuesday, given that the length of a declaration that I can call through emergency management is seven days.
Well, we, we quit mowing three weeks ago, just to not take that chance. I know people want the roads mowed and brush cut and all that, but we're not going to do. And it's, I mean, we're serious right now. It's, so.
And folks don't understand that when it gets like this, many of the fires are just due to vehicle travel, dragging a chain, bearing going out. What was it, four, three years ago, had the big one up on 2709 that was started by a chain dragging?
We actually had a fire the day before yesterday. A guy mowing his yard and hit a rock, burned up his lawnmower and a lot of his property.
Yes. I think they had Nick Holfman last year, too, up there, lawnmower, tore a bunch on fire.
There are 181 counties under a burn ban out of 254 counties right now. 71% of the counties in Texas are under a burn ban. The average for the state is 608. That's all 254 counties. And 575 is the recommendation at that point of which you institute a burn ban.
And it's, it's hard to believe that an area like Henderson County, Smith County, is the same, is higher than we are. They're like number five in the state. But in the area we're in, where we're used to getting some rain, I mean, we generally have to have a burn ban every year, but it doesn't last very long. But for Henderson County to be the 10th driest state, county in the state is a testament to how dry it is here.
Yeah. In Orange County, down there at Beaumont, is the driest county in the state right now, if you can believe that. Number three is Liberty County, right next door. Number four is Presidio County in the Big Bend. That's how dry it is in East Texas. We're drier than West Texas. Any further discussion? Comments? It's up to the court as far as how long we'd like to have it in place. You know, we traditionally do 28 days. We can go longer. We can go shorter. But we like to do it on that seven-day increment so that it lands on Commissioners' Court date.
If we went 28 days, we can, you could call it off if we do get a significant amount of rain and?
Yes.
And then we can ratify that later?
Just how we, how our order's written is that I can lift it at any time without ratification.
Okay.
The only thing that has to be ratified is an emergency declaration.
Got you.
I hope we get a significant rain out of this, this coming event, but it doesn't look like we're going to get a whole lot. I mean, some are calling for three to five inches, but most of them I've seen, two or three tenths to an inch. So, that's not going to be a lot of help with the load that we have.
Probably mainly north, northern part of the county.
And I think you said yesterday that every two tenths of an inch of rain lowers the KB, the scale one point.
One point.
And we're at 740.
And we're averaging two to three points a day increase.
And the scale goes up to 800. Because, and for the public, this measures the dryness of the soil down to eight inches, I believe. Is that, is that correct? So.
And I know, I know it's a burden on the citizens in the county, but we've got to protect everybody in the county. And, I mean, we don't like these burn bans any more than anybody else. But there's instances where we have to have them.
Any further discussions? Comments? Entertain a motion for the number of days.
Judge, I'm making motion that we extend the burn ban for 28 days.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. I was trying to make sure we didn't have a holiday in there that would cause issue. Have a motion by Commissioner Tootley, seconded by Commissioner Richardson, to extend the burn ban for an additional 28 days. burn ban for an additional 28 days. Any further discussion or comments? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Item number, item number four is consider and take action to appoint a member to the Andrews Center Board of Trustees, position five, term ending October 31, 2026. And, Court, currently, Mr. Arlis Jones is the individual that holds that position for us and has held it now for a number of terms. I'll be forthright with you, I haven't had an opportunity to speak to Mr. Jones about this appointment, but he has expressed to me in the past that he is happy to serve and to continue to serve. He has been an active member, actually even coordinating meetings between ourselves and the Andrews Center and is a very strong active member at this point. The appointment has to be made today, and I am most positive that Mr. Jones will accept that. If not, we can come back at another date and appoint a replacement. This is a two-year appointment with Andrews Center. Sheriff, you are on that board as a non-voting member at this time. Anything you'd like to add into this?
No, sir, other than, you're very correct. He is a very active member. He plays a big role over there on the board. He's there, he very rarely misses unless something of emergency happens. He enjoys what he does over there. And he serves Henderson County well. He's always speaking up for us in town, in the policy to proceed with the front before he puts Henderson County first in his thoughts.
Thank you. Questions, Court? If not, entertain a motion.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the appointment of Mr. Arlis Jones to Andrews Center Board of Trustees, position five, term ending October 31, 2026.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey and seconded by Commissioner Richardson to approve the appointment of Mr. Arlis Jones to place five on the Andrews Center Board, excuse me, Andrews Center Board of Trustees with a term ending October 31, 2026. Any further discussion? All those in favor, the motion passes unanimously. And Court, the actual resolution, as pointed out earlier, has 2024 on it. We'll get that corrected and get everyone to sign. Item number five, consider and take action to transfer a 2005 Ford van unit F5-50, VIN number 1FBSS31L25HB37645 to the City of Athens from the sheriff's office. Sheriff?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Court. And this is a transport van that we are no longer using. We just took it out of the fleet and we had a, our newest one has, is rigged out and has joined the fleet. And the City of Athens has come over and looked at it, and they are very interested and are wanting the county to transfer this, and they're going to use it at the shelter for transport of animals.
My understanding is, is that this is not only for transport but for events and so forth.
Yes, sir.
It is going to be used as an outreach tool and plus the transport of the animals.
Yes, sir.
City of Athens has been a fantastic partner in this as we've developed, as they have developed the shelter over there. And this would be a great asset and a benefit to them in meeting those needs. Any questions or comments? Entertain a motion.
So moved to approve.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully and seconded by Commissioner Spivey to transfer a 2005 Ford van, unit number F5-50, I'm not reading the VIN number again, to the City of Athens from the Harris County Sheriff's Department. All those in favor, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Sheriff. Item number six is consider and take action to accept FEMA Public Assistance Grant Award for Category B Emergency Services, DR-4781. Ms. Vaughn?
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. This is from the Department of Homeland Security and the Federal Emergency Management Agency. This is for Category B, which is the emergency protective measures, so we claimed equipment and labor for the total amount of $37,059.92. FEMA covers 75% at $27,794.94, and our non-federal share is $9,264.98.
Questions, Court? The total amount we'll be receiving is the 27, 794?
Yes, sir.
Is this on part of one of the events that we've had made?
Yes. They're breaking it in, there's several categories to be claimed, A, B, and C. And this is the B category. And there are, as you know, I sent an email concerning the Class C yesterday for them wanting actual more information on the actual roads, down to the thickness and the length, and quite a bit of detailed information, more so than I've ever seen them ask for in the past. But this is one section of the public assistance program that we're applying for to get reimbursement. This is actually receiving the award.
Yes.
Okay. Questions?
I have a question, just probably the elephant in the room, but does that, does that money go back to the people that had that expense, or does it just go back into the?
In the past, it's been done a couple of ways. It has been reallocated back to as a reimbursement for expenses to the individual precincts by how much was put in. And in some instances, such as, oh, what was it, two-year, year ago money, or year ago money that was after the end of the year, it got dropped into the reserve because that budget was no longer open.
Right, okay.
So it depends, it depends.
When, when they decide to cut us a check?
Yes, exactly.
And this Part B part, is that the, I was trying to, this be like on the day of the event where, say, the emergency management trailer comes and they had the rook there and, and all the different equipments on the day of?
It is, it is a culmination.
Of all that?
Of, of equipment. And I'll, I'll ask Fire Marshal, Category B?
Category B is going to be the initial emergency measures that we took to give access for the public.
First response.
Just pushing the stuff off the initial first response, although it's backwards, but B comes before A when it comes to FEMA, and C comes after that. So if you think about it in that manner, we start out with B, and we go to A, and we jump up to C to finish it off.
So it, it's a culmination of the precincts labor, the sheriff's department labor, and
Commissioner, it says down there on our second page of kind of where the expenses
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, seconded by Commissioner Richardson to accept the FEMA Public Assistance Grant Award for Category B Emergency Services, DR-4781, as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Item number seven is receive financial reports, of which we have none. Item eight is consider and take action on payroll distributions and accounts cash sheets. It's like, good morning.
I have biweekly 21, 22, and also monthly for September. That is approval.
Okay. Court, discussion on payrolls 21 and 22? Hearing none, entertain a motion on both payrolls.
I'd like to make the motion to approve payroll disbursement totals for biweekly 21 and 22 as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey and seconded by Commissioner McCam to approve the biweekly payroll distributions 21 and 22 as presented. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Accounts cash sheet.
September.
September accounts cash sheet. Hearing none, entertain a motion.
So moved to approve.
Seconded the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully and seconded by Commissioner Richardson to approve the accounts cash sheet for the period ending of September 2024 as presented. All those in favor, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, ma'am. Item number nine is consider and take action on submitted contracts. And this morning, we have a couple of them. We'll begin with the contract for Five Star, which is the, it's not commissary.
Food service.
Food service, food service.
Yes, this is actually the last year that we would have the opportunity to extend this bid. This would take it to the fifth year. They do a good job for us. We have, we've got, we always have very little problems with Five Star. And we're asking the court to extend it, and all, all we have to do is basically send them a letter saying we'd like to use the extension of the last year, and then we'll have to go out to bid again next year. Prices are staying the same, so we'll just continue the contract as, as it's written.
I'll say a couple of things about this contract. One is, is that this is one of those items that actually the sheriff in his duties has full rights to and control of. In Henderson County, we have had a long history of the cooperation between the sheriff's department on these type of issues in allowing the court's discussion to be brought into it. And we appreciate that. I want to recognize that. It's been going on now 15, 18 years. So that's very important. And the second one is, isn't it Five Star that partnered with us during COVID in our response to keep the daycares open, providing the milk and, and all of those?
That was the organization that we leaned on to get extra services here for Henderson County. And they stood up and helped. It was just a phone call, simple phone conversation, and they come running to Henderson County just like they do in the jail every day.
Now, I really wanted to bring that out with this organization because we had, Shane, how many daycares we were supporting through this during COVID?
I want to say there was 12 or 13.
12 or 13. And they stepped up on a phone call. Any other comments or discussion?
Does it include, or, do they send people here to cook that food, or do y'all, y'all have people?
We have inmates cook it. They are supervised by Five Star staff. And basically, the Five Star staff lays out the.
Meal plans.
The meal plans and the menus every week. And then they're, they're supervised inmates to, to prepare the food and disseminate it throughout the jail.
Any other questions, comments?
Do you need to sign it?
Judge. I think usually what we've been doing is the judge signs the letter.
Any other comments? Entertain a motion with Judge's authorization.
I'll make the motion to renew the contract with Five Star with Judge's authorization signed.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, seconded by Commissioner Richardson to approve the one-year contract extension with Five Star with the county judge's authorization to sign. Any further discussion or comments? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Sheriff. The next one is a contract from King's Roofing, and this is to replace the shingled roof on the four porches of the courthouse. This particular contract is under the bid requirement, but given the documents they sent us, it is, does require approval of the contract and has to be done by Commissioner's court. I did request of Mr. Strom to review this, and the only concerns that Mr. Strom had was pictures. And it's not big, but we wanted to be sure the court understood the full complexity.
Good morning, Court. It's probably not a big deal, but in Section 10 or Paragraph 10, the last sentence, it's kind of a form contract, you're seeing this a lot these days, that this company has power to take photos and post those on their social media for advertising. Not a big deal by itself. Under the Homeland Security Act in Texas, which is also implemented through the federal government and the Public Information Act, the county does have a duty to protect security protocols. I don't think or anticipate an issue, but if they're taking certain photos of the roof, it could reveal security locations. If we had a way to control that, we could blackout those photos or at least control them. If we don't have that control, we just have to take that risk that we could inadvertently reveal the security.
Questions, Ms. Vaughn? Uh, Ms. Strong? Ms. Strong? Sheriff, any concerns? Okay.
There's already overhead satellite from Google, Amvid, and every other satellite company out there. He will do, so you can pretty much zoom in anyway and see our roof.
The total amount of this is $12,886.94. Any questions or comments?
And that's to replace all four porches?
Roofs, yes, sir.
Is this the only bid that we got?
No, there were two others, and they're not actually bids, you know, given, but they were, they were much higher. One was 28, well, we had, we had two, two, I believe. One was 28,000, and this one was 12,000. Any further questions or comments? Entertain a motion with Judge's authorization.
So moved to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully and seconded by Commissioner Richardson to approve the contract with King Roofing for replacement of the four porch roofs of the courthouse in the amount of $12,886.94 with the county judge's authorization signed. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Strong and Sheriff. Item 10, consider and take action on request for right-of-way permits. It's like we have one in precinct two and precinct three. Commissioner Tully?
Yes, Judge. I, Court, I have a, one from East Cedar Creek Freshwater Supply District. It was an emergency repair on a two-inch water main. It was in the middle of the road in Thunderbird Shores. And it was a, it's already been done, and we went out there to check it, and they're good. But it was an emergency that had, needed to be fixed immediately.
Questions for the Commissioner? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
Judge, I move we approve the utility line activity for East Cedar Creek on Emergency Two-Inch Water Main in the middle of the road and Thunderbird Shores at 116 Thunderbird, with Commissioner's authorization to sign.
I'll second this motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully and seconded by Commissioner Spivey to approve the right-of-way agreement with East Cedar Creek Freshwater Supply District for emergency repairs to Two-Inch Water Main in the middle of the road at 116 Thunderbird Drive, Gumbel City, Texas, with Commissioner's authorization to sign. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Commissioner?
Yes, I have three. They are all by Bethel Ash Water Supply Company. They are all private to private. The first one is at a four-inch road bore under County Road 3922 and Valley View Drive. It's 100 feet from private to private. The second one is County Road, a one-inch bore, County Road 3700, for 100 feet from private to private. private to private. And the third one is a one-inch bore, County Road 3715, 100 feet from private to private.
Questions for the Commissioner? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I'd like to move that we approve the notice of proposed utility line activity for Bethel Ash Water Supply Company on County Road 3922, County Road 3715, and County Road 3700 with the Commissioner's signature to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, seconded by Commissioner Richardson to approve the right-of-way agreements with Bethel Ash Water Supply Corporation for road bores on County Road 3922, 3715, and 3700 with the Commissioner's authorization to sign. All those in favor of the motion? Passes unanimously. Item 11, consider and take action on submitted budget amendments. Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, sir. We just have some.
Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2024 budget amendments as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and seconded by Commissioner McCam to approve the budget amendments as presented. All those in favor of the motion? Passes unanimously. Item 12, consider and take action on payment of bills. Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, sir. For fiscal year 2024, a amount of $597,413 in asking cents.
Commissioner Spivey, questions?
I have no questions, Judge.
Commissioner Tulley?
I have none.
Commissioner McCam?
I have none.
Commissioner Rich?
No questions, Judge.
Entertain a motion.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the fiscal year 2024 bills in the amount of $597,413.19 as presented.
How seconded the motion?
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and seconded by Commissioner Spivey to approve the bills in the amount of $597,413.19 as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Item 13 is consider and take action on submitted plaits.
No plaits.
Thank you. Item 14 is open and consider bids.
Good morning. Good morning. Set bid, bid for, or bid packet for fiscal year 2024 vending machines. These are the vending machines that are at the annex, the courthouse, Judicial Building, and the Justice Center. Proposed dates are the first ad to go out this Saturday, November 2nd, second ad to go out next Saturday, November 9th. We open the bid on Tuesday, November 19th, and bring it back to court Tuesday, November 26th. Or the following weekend, if we have court that day.
We will have court that day, yes. Court, questions?
Does this, the sample calculation, is that, that we make 75 cents an hour?
That's just so they sort of know how to fill out the, it's totally made up. Just so they know how to fill out the.
Okay. I was going to say that cost $3, we don't get any bonus on it.
Yeah. Totally made up numbers, just as a sample, so vendors can know how to fill out the response sheet.
Other questions? And the reason we're having to do this is our current vendor has, is no longer in the business of supporting?
I believe so. We can't reach them.
Okay.
They just picked up their vending machines, is what I'm told, and it's been a couple months since I heard anything from them, so.
Further questions, comments? Entertain a motion.
So moved to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley and seconded by Commissioner Richardson to approve the bid specifications for vending machines as presented. Any further comments? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you, sir. And item 15 is consider and take action to adjourn.
So moved. I'll second the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tulley and seconded by Commissioner McCam to adjourn at 9:52. All those in favor of the motion? Passes unanimously.